And welcome back to our Thursday, November 14 workshop. We have one item carried over from the morning session. It's the discussion of the school board attorney model, the consultant versus in-house staff. And it's going to be presented by Mr. Williams and Dr. Pruitt. And Dr. Desmore, who will be here soon.
All right.
Please take it away.
All right. Good afternoon. Again, I just want to give you a brief overview. We're going to be discussing the structure of the legal counsel office, the structure of the school board attorney's office, the anticipated fiscal impact to the district and potential savings of doing one model versus the other, as well as a potential recruitment action plan in the event that the board decides to opt for an individual in the role of the school board attorney. Just jumping right in, this is the previous organizational chart that we showed as it relates to the legal counsel office. Happy to report that we've already hired the Office of Civil Rights and Equity Coordinator, Ryan Hudak, who started on Monday. And it's already filled in at quite a few meetings for me today. So we've also got interviews scheduled for Friday, which is tomorrow, for the staff attorney position for academic and student services. We have, we had five candidates, one withdrew yesterday. However, there are, the four that are remaining are pretty strong. All of them have education and experience. Three in particular have school district experience as attorneys or higher ed, meaning college or university experience.
Excuse me, Brian, we don't have this one yet.
No, and I apologize for that. The, as it relates to the operations and labor position, that one's still currently advertised. Again, because that position will assist in employment-related issues as well as the operations department that is now expanding. I wanted to make sure that we got a good breadth of applicants that have knowledge, especially as it relates to contract law, because that will be pertinent moving forward with that particular department. And again, this model was designed to assist each of the two critical areas and needs, which is our academic department and our operations department, given that we have to have sales tax and we'll be doing a lot of construction. Academic, obviously, being a very broad area that covers ESC amongst other issues. So that's the current existing model. Now we'll jump to the next slide. These are just the job functions. And I'm doing this both with both positions so that you kind of fully have an understanding of what the reported functions of each office are. I think we have these job descriptions that don't really detail as much. They're kind of very broad or generic. But I really, over the course of the last year, kind of tried to identify what each person did. And I'll give an example. The retainer agreement that we entered into with Wyssaroda listed ESC, for example. To my knowledge, they haven't done any ESC issues, no fault of their own. But that was a typical function that I think Rob Dotick, when he was the staff attorney, had done a lot of ESC issues and carried over to his position as a school court attorney. I don't know if that was historically done by Keith Martin. Nevertheless, that is a role and function that will completely be absorbed by the legal counsel office and in particular, the academic attorney or myself. One of the things that we have historically sent outside to outside counsel are due process hearings as it relates to ESC matters. Those are typically expedited through DOA. It's my hope and belief that we will now bring those all in-house. We will no longer refer those to outside attorneys. Those will be absorbed in-house. And again, this, this is a laundry list and I'll make sure you guys get it. But it just to see, you know, review board policies, collective bargaining, ESC, student matters, Chal Cuskey, student enrollment, FHSAA, which are athletic issues, which believe it or not, do come up every so often. Expulsion hearings. Again, this is a pretty long, comprehensive list, but it's very specific. So for example, a lot of people might not know we did garnishments over here. But the Office of OCR Academics, those are any of our Office of Civil Rights complaints that may relate to the academic department. Again, contracts, both on the operations side and on the academic side. Perp hearings and arbitrations, those are done through human resources. In the event a employee chooses to go beyond a hearing and request those through that particular service, those again will be handled in-house through the legal counsel office. Again, laundry list of things that we do, predetermination hearings, ADA hearings, DARE hearings, real estate matters, public records, FERPA, risk management, charter schools, interlocal agreements, MOUs. And I, there are a couple of things that say in conjunction with the school board attorney's office, those will always be in conjunction with the school board attorney's office. And those matters in particular will also be led by the school board attorney. So we will support and obviously give input. But I think any sort of contractual, major contractual agreement that the board enters into, I'm going to go out and say that you will probably feel comfortable with your attorney looking at that and being, playing a major role in drafting that, those items. And again, we will support that office in that context. Now jumping to the board attorney's office. And again, this is getting very specific. I know you, you saw a, an agreement that had a lot of different roles, but this really kind of delves down into what we anticipate an individual can, individual or firm can do. Reporting to the board, attending all meetings, proponentarian. Again, these are very specific to you. This is, this person or firm will work for you. There is no overlap as it relates to the legal counsel office other than the review and collaboration on certain types of agreements or sharing of information, which we currently do. Excellent. And again, this is just giving you what I believe would be, you know, complete legal services to you as a board in various areas. And again, advising the board on impact of new legislation and court decisions. I think that's important, that you kept, be kept up to date on those types of issues. I know I keep the superintendent up to date on any issues or staff. I mean, I go to our school board attorney conferences and constantly, and provide a training from a variety of lawyers on a variety of issues. I tend to, you know, share with, I probably overshare it, I think.
Yeah, send me texts on the weekends and everything.
Yes, so I probably overshare and I probably send way more emails than people probably want. But, you know, I do it because I, again, I'm one of those people that I want, if it's pertaining to your area, I want you to know about it. And I assume that, you know, issues that the board attorney determines are relevant to you as a body will share that information with you. And then grants charter schools. And charter schools is both through the application process on through termination, if that becomes an issue. Again, I think you want the board attorney to play a very integral role in that process where they would be the lead, but again, the legal counsel office would support it. Excellent. Again, this is just another list of some of the functions of that office. Which leads me to the point as it relates to one versus the other. I think obviously historically, we've had an individual in that role. Now we currently have a firm. I believe the expenses associated with having a firm, even considering the current model as it relates to flat fee, far exceeds, I think, the expense that would be incurred if you had an individual. And that's both including salary and benefits. I think one of the things that can be taken into consideration, especially with respect to the function of the board attorney's office, is that some of the issues that have historically been absorbed by the board attorney can be absorbed by the legal counsel office. And I specifically will cite contracts. I think, I have no problem as the office expands, assuming the responsibility as it relates to the contract structure with the various departments. Again, we are moving towards form contracts. I think that board attorney will always have to sign those documents on your behalf to review them for legal form insufficiency. But the, the, the hours spent reviewing those things, I think, will be greatly reduced with the forms, but also can be absorbed by legal counsel. So as we pair away at the board attorney's position, I think again, it, it moves to the point of potentially, you know, making it easier for an individual to perform that function. And that's not to say, obviously, Wyssaroda has a variety of areas and, you know, specialized areas. I think we will always rely on, unless we bring someone in-house that has a particular specialty in real estate or bonds. I mean, everyone knows, throughout the state, that, you know, Bob Gang does bonds and all of those issues that no one apparently else wants to do. But he has become an expert. So I think any area where there's a really specific area of expertise, where I think we're going to always want to retain outside counsel, both to protect the district, but to ensure that we're getting the best legal services in that area. You know, just looking at the model, I believe we've spent, if we go with the current existing contract that was renewed, we'll be looking at close to $570,000 in less than a year because I think the current contract runs till April. And I think they started in May of last year. Just taking that number out and, you know, again, considering the salary and benefits of an individual, you're, you're probably going to be looking at saving anywhere potentially between $300,000 plus, just in that role alone, which again, can be used to add additional staff where you see appropriate in different areas. Again, that leads again to, I think, our recommendation, which will be further explained, that I think it's in the best interest of the board to probably retain an individual. I think it, in addition to the cost savings, it gives you the ability to have constant communication. You have someone that's, you know, here, you know, 24 hours a day. Not necessarily, but I guess if they're in, they're here during the work hours, that you can walk in and have those type of conversations. And again, that does not mean that we can't retain firms for specialized areas or specific areas as needed. You know, right now, I send, because Wyssaroda has an attorney that used to work for the EEOC, I send our E, a couple of our EEOC cases to that particular attorney just because I know they have a very good grasp on how to respond to those and almost think like, obviously, they're thinking like the agency that's investigating us. Some of those, again, will be absorbed as, as our staff increases. But I think there's just going to be areas where we need to, again, rely on outside counsel. And that's where we will make a, a joint decision on what's in the best interest of the board. But I believe, again, you know, thinking fiscally, that, you know, the model of having an individual would probably be the best for the board. So on that note, I will turn it over to Dr. Desmore, who can explain some of the.
Before, you're going to switch slide presentation?
No, it's actually the documents that you do have, so.
Okay, well, I don't know what anybody else thinks. Can we discuss the ones that are up there before we switch?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Oh, sorry, did you want me to have it up there while you were looking at it, or are you?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Want me to back up?
Okay, so going through that list, what is, what will be, if any, the relationship between, like, the new person that, that you hired in our diversity and inclusion with Jared? And also with Office of Professional Standards? Where, where do you see that, those two fitting in with legal?
So that's a great question. And I'll start with the diversity office. I've already spoken with Jared, I know he's out of town. We've had some general discussions on how that will kind of, there was a lot of overlap there on a lot of different topics and a lot of different issues. For example, I plan on sending Mr. Hudak along with Jared to the, it's basically equity coordinators throughout the state for the various agencies, which is a conference that's going to be in Orlando in December. They review all the issues related to equity. I really want there to be a collaborative effort between our two offices. And I see collaboration on a lot of training. So one of the topics we talked about was training. One of the things that I think the district needs, in particular, at every level, is to increase training in very focused and specific areas and then create a process to provide continuous training. We have employees come and go, so, you know, simply doing training once a year may not help if you have a change of positions. So one of the topics we discussed is, in addition to doing live trainings, is actually videotaping the training so that they can be made available.
Yeah, like the Title IX and all of those issues. I see that they would be, you know, lots of times you think for diversity, it's racial or, but we have so many other issues that, you know, the gender and all of those issues that we have to keep in mind that might even be really hotter potatoes, so to speak, than some of the issues that we've been more used to seeing.
You are absolutely correct. And you kind of, you kind of stole the thunder, but we are bringing to the board a little, we are, we are bringing to the board a new non-discrimination policy.
Okay.
And we have added a lot to it. So there will be, obviously, explanations going along with it. But we have added things that have historically not been in our non-discrimination policy, including gender identification, including genetic information, things that aren't typically in there. There's the bill as it relates to antisemitism that relates to actually race. Most people think it's covered under religion, but it actually falls under race based on current court decisions. So there are things that we're putting in there to be, again, consistent with state law, federal law, that will be a little bit more expansive and cover various areas. Now, that non-discrimination policy will also translate into our harassment policy, our bullying and harassment policy, all of which are being updated as it relates to bullying and harassment policy in particular. We are going to, the state statutes require that every three years, we reevaluate that, that policy and we're in that three-year gap. And so it's going to require that we go to the Student Advisory Committee, go out to the community, go to a variety of different groups per state statute. And it's an excellent time that we brought on this position because again, in collaboration with Jared's office, we're going to get into a lot of these issues.
Horizontal.
Correct. And we've also, we presented initially the non, Chuck Bradley and myself, our director of positive prevention, presented to the EDAC committee, I believe, in September. Maybe it was October. But we went to them and actually got their feedback. They did vote on consensus to approve us moving forward with it. They did give comments on it, which we'll receive, both in adding and actually subtracting. One of the concerns, for example, of one of the board members was that it was too, you know, we've got to consider liability as we create any sort of policy, especially as it relates to discrimination. And so we want to make it, we want to add groups to comply with the law, but we don't want to also open ourselves up to a lawsuit for every single issue that could potentially come up. So again, that was also taken into consideration. And we're still vetting it. That's why you haven't gotten it. We're still vetting it and to make sure that we have it as comprehensive as possible. But I hope that answers that. As it relates to professional standards, we had a meeting this week. I think this is one of the reasons I think it was important that it, it kind of came out of the HR component. It's two different processes. It's two different houses. Professional standards will investigate employee discipline aspects. Mr. Hudak will investigate any issue that falls under the discrimination aspect. And they will have, they potentially will have different results. Now, those investigations could come multiple ways. You could have it come in as a complaint of discrimination, which ultimately through an investigation, it is determined that there is some misconduct or violation of school or policy. That then gets transferred to professional standards for further investigation of the employees as it relates to that issue. Likewise, you can have it come in the other way where it's an employee discipline issue where a matter of discrimination comes up, at which point, my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, that professional standards would then refer that to the Office of Civil Rights for investigation or follow-up with the complainant. So I think, but I want to be very clear about that too, because this was some discussion. The investigations will be separate. I think that's important, that one, one does not influence the other. And there are different issues and different standards. So what may constitute a violation of our school board policy may not necessarily arise to discrimination as law dictates, so.
Okay, so to clarify that, let's say that an employee has, needs disciplining, all right? And that employee feels that he or she has been discriminated against, that, that other people in the department weren't held to those standards. So would it then move to the legal department from professional standards? Is that how that goes?
The employee investigation will still remain with professional standards because you have that allegation of misconduct by the employee. However, if that employee, you know, raises in that investigation or in their defense, according to your hypothetical, issues that may present as racial discrimination, then that would be something that the civil rights.
Or ageism, or?
Anything that's under a protected class.
Yeah, or gender identity, any, any of those things. So that, at that point, if somebody says, it's because I'm 65 years old, I'm still doing my job, but, you know, they want to push me out for somebody younger, like ageism, let's say, that would then move to the legal department from professional standards? If they claim that?
Again, just to be clear, their discipline would still, it's, it's two different tracks. So their discipline would still continue. What happens as part of that investigative process, I don't control. However, again, there is an issue of discrimination or anything that falls under the Department for Civil Rights and Equity, then that would be, that would be removed.
So there'd be two things possibly going on at once?
Potentially, but, but.
Okay, I just wanted to wrap my head around how that works because I can see that as an issue possibly.
But on the other side of it, I think that, that it does help us, I think, attack both concerns with more objectivity.
Right, no, I'm not against it. I'm just saying it's going to be.
Yeah, you're correct. And there may be.
It's going to be a fine line in, in some instances.
No, and you're, and you're right. And there will be some instances where one investigation may need to move forward before another one can begin. So I don't want you to think that it's, you know, every case will be, you know, traveling at the same time.
Yeah, I'd just like to wrap my head around scenarios.
No, I just, I just want to be clear with everyone so you understood that it's, it's two separate offices and two separate related issues. And I recognize that it used to be in one office, so now it's, I want to make it clear that it's not.
Thank you, thank you.
So who's going to handle the assignment of cases to outside counsel? Would that be your office?
That's, it, okay, so that depends. And that's a great question. That depends on the type of case and the manner in which it comes in. Currently, tort liability, it's a collaborative, it's a collaborative effort per board policy, actually. So typically, I get a, we get a case comes, that comes in, it's usually served on the school board attorney. I get a copy. Our, our third-party administrator will review it and make a recommendation. We have existing law firms. And again, we're currently evaluating that, that, those firms as well. The, at that point, then I collaborate back with the school board attorney, discussing the type of case, the type of firm that may have experience in that issue. And then we assign as, as we see fit in terms of both coming to a conclusion on that. If it's a specialized matter, that may be like a real estate issue or something to that effect, again, it'll be a collaborative effort on that regard as well. I don't think you'll ever get a situation where it's just one person making, making the call. There will be a joint decision in that process. And I, I believe that's how our board policy spells it out.
So we might be getting to this with the money, with you, Dr. Desmore. I'm looking at a memo right now that we got from the board attorney that assigns a lawsuit to an attorney in their firm. And I have to assume that those fees are covered by our flat fee. So that would be an additional expense.
So actually, if it's, the one I'm thinking of is probably Samantha Soto. That's one of those EEO discrimination cases. That's actually an expense that we would normally have an outside counsel. Again, because of her area expertise, having worked for the EEOC as an attorney for them, I felt comfortable having her have that as opposed to one of our other law firms that handles that. I, I've reviewed, what I've started doing is I review everybody's pleadings. So anybody that works for us as outside counsel, I see a copy of every great pleading that goes out and in a lot of cases have input on some of them, based, you know, my knowledge of the district and how it operates. So in that particular case, I recommended it. They adopt, they obviously agree with it because it's their firm, but I, I made the recommendation because I thought it was in the best interest of the district.
Okay, so I guess what I'm trying to get a feel for is who does that? And I don't think you answered that question. Other than to say both of you do it. And what is the cost? And is that cost currently absorbed under the flat fee rate? Or is that an additional cost? And will Dr. Desmore be talking about that cost?
That cost is an additional cost that's not covered under there because I don't believe that fell into any of the areas of their engagement letter because it's not a role that's typically done by the school board attorney. So it does not include in their, their fixed rate cost. It's an expense that the district would have regardless of who, who did it. Now, along those lines, with the expansion of the office, it's also an expense that I do intend on bringing back in-house. So again, to my point, that's an area that I think we can handle in-house.
But not with the positions you have listed now, right? That would be an additional attorney?
No, I think we could potentially do it. Again, it just, it varies on the, the area of expertise of, of the attorneys that apply. Several of the attorneys that have applied for some of our positions have experience in that particular area.
Some of it will be a little undefined once that final candidate for each of those positions are hired and we know where their strengths are.
Yeah, I, you know, just to be clear on that too, it, it, there are things that I think the attorneys that we're bringing on, as well as myself, can handle in-house. It's really a timing issue because sometimes these issues hit all at once. For example, we had two expulsion hearings back-to-back, a DOA hearing. And so there was a three-day DOA hearing. You know, that involves multiple depositions, witnesses, et cetera. There's only so much time in a day. So it, it all is dependent upon, you know, what is going on in terms of litigation or administrative proceedings at one time. Typically, I try to handle it. In most cases, I handle a lot of our EEOC issues. I handle those in-house at the investigative level. They only get referred out when it becomes a federal lawsuit in the middle district. So we're, as part of the job description, we're requiring that the attorneys that are applying be barred in both the state of Florida as well as the middle district so they will be able to practice in federal court. I'm barred in all three middle federal courts in the state of Florida as well as the 11th Circuit Court of Appeals. So we have, we'll be able to have the attorneys that can actively practice in whatever court we get sued in, so.
And I'm trying to understand too. You had said that in looking at this, the board attorney is doing less, plus, less than what Rob was doing, as well as now bringing on two attorneys and outside counsel. So with bringing in two attorneys and outside counsel, with them doing less, we're, we have savings?
We ultimately will. I mean, believe it or not. I mean, I think that you're going to have fixed, the thing, the, the thing with the additional attorneys is it's a fixed cost, it's not going to go up, it's not going to fluctuate. I mean, obviously, you have annual increases or increases as, as their contracts provide, but you have a, a fixed cost that also provides you savings. So for example, those due process cases will come in, so that's an expense that will no longer go out. We just had one of those that went to hearing about a week ago, which involved multiple, which was with an outside attorney, involved multiple interviews of witnesses. I think there were at least eight witnesses in that case. We got to the day of hearing and it actually resolved at the hearing. But that's probably, and I haven't seen the bills yet on that, but those are all in excess of $10,000. So that's again, a amount, and that's just one hearing. So let's assume the bill was $15,000. That comes back and gets absorbed by that attorney's salary, which represents, again, a savings to the district. And then you also have that institutional knowledge within the district.
And that's saying that we are, if we are hiring those people that can actually do that type of litigation?
Correct, and that's what I'm looking for, to be honest with you. I've left the one position open again to getting, you know, to make sure that we have a broad pool of experienced people. Again, three of, I know for a fact, three of the attorneys that we'll be interviewing tomorrow have substantial experience in these areas as it relates to academics. We're actually going to ask them some really hard questions. So, you know, very specific questions actually about ESC and other matters to really gain a knowledge of exactly what type of knowledge they have in those particular areas.
I guess, I'm sorry. I guess looking at this, and of course, I've been here just a year, but seeing that we had two people doing all of this and now we're extending it out to five different people, that's, I mean, we waste a lot of money just outsourcing all this stuff? Is basically what is being said, correct? So we're trying to make that correction.
Well, now, you know, back when you had two attorneys, you know, board attorney and staff attorney, there were a lot of things that were outsourced by those two attorneys, like you spoke about the ESC. You know, we had, you know, one attorney that, in particular, one firm in particular, that handled the majority of our ESC cases. So a lot of that stuff really was handled by that firm rather than handled in-house. So, I mean, outsourcing has been a part of the way the district has handled this for really a long period of time. So even though you've had the two, you know, two can't handle all of the things that the district is involved in, so they've done significant outsourcing. The other area is down in insurance and benefits with, with handling the tort cases, et cetera. You know, where that, that has been one where, you know, workers' comp and things like that are handled by an outside firm.
It, it's a combination of the amount of work. I mean, anybody's being honest with you, it's just a lot of work and things given this. And I'm not saying that we didn't have good services before, but. And I'm not saying that we didn't have good services before, but there's just so much out there that I think having, again, attorneys that are specific to departments, that can work with those departments on an almost daily basis, you'll actually reduce your number of issues down the line. It's proactive, it's a proactive approach to resolving issues on the front end as opposed to the back end. And I think, you know, when you have an attorney that has the time to actually sit in some of those decision-making processes, you're gonna ultimately get better results. I think staff will appreciate having that support at that level throughout the process as opposed to when it becomes an issue. So, you know, it's a, a, I think a good model that a lot of districts have gone to, especially our larger districts. I can, I'll be honest and tell you that a lot of our, even our similarly sized districts are going to that model. For example, Brevard had only one attorney, but they added a position of a assistant general counsel. My understanding is Polk is in the process of trying to reevaluate and expand their office. Pinellas is also reevaluating and expanding or modifying how they do business. So I think a lot of the districts that have historically made it with one or two are recognizing that, that it's just a, it, it, it's an area that you need to, you know, pay attention to and make sure you have the appropriate model to service the district as a whole. And I, and that's ultimately what I, I want to do. I really, it's, I feel bad when I can't respond to staff members' emails. I feel bad when I'm, can't go to a meeting because I'm in another meeting. So it, I, I'm hopeful that it will clear up some of those issues, will get better response time on legally-related issues. And again, staff will have the ability to have an attorney present when they need to. And even if it's, hey, I got a quick meeting that I didn't anticipate, there's an attorney that can go and sit with the academic department, because that's their area, so.
So, okay, anyone else? Okay, my question is this, and kind of goes along with what Ms. Jordan was, I guess, Ms. Jordan was just saying. Either way you look at it, we're looking at an additional cost for additional department, including four or five attorneys and people to work with them. So there's that cost to set up that process. And you're also looking at having one board attorney, which would still be added to that cost. And maybe this is what she's going to say when she talks about the cost, but we're still looking at an additional cost, which is what she was saying. I, I'm not sure I understand if it, let, let me finish, though. Part of, part of having to retain outside counsel is, and my question as well, is who makes that decision? And if you hire someone, let's say, that's good with the insurance law, but then suddenly we start getting issues in a different type of law, then we still have to go outside to outside counsel for that. So, to outsource to that. When you said 575 is way above, and I know that is way above what we need to do, but putting it in perspective, that was the first time that we worked with this law firm, and there were a lot of things on the other list that they did. So saying the 575 is kind of a misconception in that it wasn't just what you're showing here that they did. They did a lot of the things that the new attorneys that are gonna be hired will be doing. So their, their flat fee, I believe, was what, 225?
For six months.
For six months.
Which would be 450 annually. But I think, you know, and just so you fully understand, now, I don't think everything that they did was covered under that cost. There were expenses that went beyond that. We can pull every single bill they did, and I'll give you an example.
What do you think you're doing?
We still haven't, we still haven't received the invoice for October, for example. And my understanding just, I don't see their bills, so I don't, I don't, I don't review their bills. But my understanding is that we have not received one bill that's been less than $40,000 a month. So it's anticipated that additional bill will be at least $40,000 a month for the, at the month of October. You know, again, another thing I think to take into consideration is consistency. You know, you, you, you're going to have, you know, one attorney versus several that may appear at a time. And I'm not, and again, I'm not criticizing any of the attorneys that have appeared on behalf of White-Sir Rooks, I actually like every single one of them. So I just think you're going to get, we're all different. I mean, I could, we can all look at things a different way and, and give a different perspective. I think you're going to get more consistency with one individual versus several, which I think in most cases, especially as it relates to the law, consistency is a, is a good thing.
But in their defense, when there is something that is the law, I know they do discuss it and come up with a collective answer, and not necessarily just one of them saying, I think this, and the other one thinking that.
I would hope so.
I'm just putting that forward. And anyway, go ahead, and maybe it's, if there's no other questions?
I don't share, I have a question. So, Dr. Desmorez, what did we spend on legal services in 2017, 18, 18, 19? And under the model that's being proposed, what would our legal expenses be for the coming year?
Well, in, in 2019, we spent a total of about 574,000, and that was with a combination of both a board attorney and staff attorney. I think that's what you're asking, right? So with the combination of the two, that was 573,000.
But that, for the two attorneys or for all legal services? So all of the outsourced costs? That includes all the outsourced costs?
That includes, okay, so that includes the outsourced cost that we budget within the staff and board attorney's departments. It would not include those things that went through, like our, our workers' comp, HR, insurance-type area. It would not include those things, but it would include everything that either our board attorney and our staff attorney took care of within their departments.
So are you saying that 574 is just the, the board attorney that we've had for the last several months, and then the other part where Rob was still here? Is that what the 574 is?
It would also include some outsourced services that they budgeted for and paid there with, paid for within their departments. So it would include some of those outsourced services.
So if Dr. Pruitt was using an attorney, if, if some of her work was being outsourced, is that included?
So workers' comp would be what is not included, because we go through John's Eastern. So it's a, there's a whole separate process that's used. So that.
Will stand alone.
Is not germane to this conversation at this time.
Okay, so that stands alone and will continue to stand alone?
For now, yes.
So the numbers you're giving us are, are every legal dollar spent?
Correct, through either the board attorney or staff attorney's office in FY19, about 574,000. In the new model that we're talking about here, just taking the piece of the staff attorney's area, which would, which would include Brian and the new positions that he's talking about here, that would be about 547,000. And then a, an employed board, board attorney, along with some anticipated outsourced things from the board attorney, would add potentially another 265,000 onto that, for a total of 812,000.
Okay, so that's 225 versus what we're anticipating, which is 450?
That would, at, at, at least 4, 450, and you're talking about for the outsourced.
No, I think she's done that, right?
I can answer any questions also. Seems like we're talking a lot about our bills, and I'm happy to discuss kind of the work we've done and.
I don't want to get into that. I'm really trying to understand in terms of where we were and where we intend to go, and, you know, what, you know, what are we looking back and, looking at in dollars? That's, that's my question.
Does it include benefits?
That includes benefits, yeah.
Okay, so that, so the figure would include the benefits as well as the basic salary?
Yes, it would, that, that would be salaries and benefits, that's correct. So within salaries and benefits and outsourced services within the two departments, in FY19, 574,000. And then the new model, the anticipated full-year cost for a, you know, full year for the new attorneys would be about 547,000, and then with an anticipated additional 265,000 for a budgeted salary and benefit of an on-staff board attorney, plus some anticipated outsourced legal services for that.
And how much would that be? That's not, the outsour, the outsourcing is where I'm confused. For example, a couple of cases that we've had, and we've used, you know, the name of the.
Henderson.
Henderson, okay. So is Henderson Franklin included in that 547?
Yes, it would, yes, it would be.
So the 547 is, is all the outsourcing to all of the firms we outsource to? All of the attorneys that would be working with Mr. Williams?
In-house.
And then add to that 265 for the board attorney?
Correct, we anticipate about 500,000 for the actual salaries and benefits of the people themselves, and then another 45,000 for the outsourced piece in staff, in the staff attorney area. For the total of the 547, I mean, that, that we're quoting, yes.
I think I need to ask this, because there would be, we could have like a little chart, because I think it's easier to see in black and white.
Do you have that to go, please go.
Oh.
Yeah, that would be the, that would be the next little piece we're ready to move on to.
Okay.
Well, let me pull up the, if you would, pull up that third one first.
This legal contact?
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
So, okay, I, I'm still not with full clarity about that. If we backed up to fiscal year 18, between the staff attorney and the board attorney and outsourcing, how much did we spend then?
About 560,000.
Total?
For the two? For the two, yes.
In-house attorneys plus their outsourcing?
Yes, in 2018, about 400,000 in the board attorney area, and another 160,000 in the staff attorney area.
In 2018?
2018.
I thought I remembered seeing information from Keith Martin, where we were spending close to $500,000 on outside counsel. I'm trying to find it in my email, but it's been so long. So I'm not sure how that includes outside counsel.
Okay, and that, well, and that could have been some of the outside counsel related to some of the HR, workers' comp, insurance-related matters that we're saying we don't have in this mix right now, because until some time rolls around, it won't be in this mix. It'll still be some things handled outside.
Yeah, so it's really difficult, then, to compare, you know, where we were and where we want to go. If, if we, we just heard that the HR stuff is not germane to the conversation, but then that may have included some of that.
Some of the HR stuff.
The workers' comp.
Yeah, the workers' comp stuff.
Just the workers' comp, that's all.
The, there is a lot of, of work, like employment law contracts and things like that, that, that would be included and currently included, that, that is contained in the HR function that the staff attorneys handle, and will continue to do so.
Okay, so what I heard you say then, we spent about 400,000 just from the board attorney's office for the board attorney and the outsourcing that, that that person did.
In 2018, that's correct.
In 2018. And then from the staff attorney's side?
160,000.
160, 160,000.
And that included outside?
It was, yes, in 2018, we had directly from the staff attorney's office, 152,000, and some change in a, in their staff attorney's salary and benefits, and then another 7,000 from outside legal, from staff attorney. In the board attorney's area, there was another 115,000 with outside attorneys.
So that 150 was included as a 400?
Yes, it was.
So most of the outside attorneys was billed to board attorney as opposed to in-house?
In 2018, yes, it was.
Okay.
In 2018, yes, it was. So Ms. Matrica, if you're talking about some information that you were saying, said we saw before?
I know what you're talking about.
Okay.
I cannot find it in here right now.
I'm not exactly sure what it is, but we're happy to try to, like, get our hands on it and figure out.
Because he used to give us the annual breakdown of what he did to show how he was managing outside attorneys.
Exactly. Okay, okay.
And that number is way higher than, is what I'm getting.
Okay.
And it may very well include the, the workers' comp stuff.
I, I think it probably does, because there is a lot of things that go through workers' comp and insurance-related type things that go directly through insurance and not through either the staff or the board attorney's office for those bills to be made.
Right, but he was only giving us the stuff that he doled out. So he wouldn't have included, if he's not doling out the workers' comp stuff, then he wouldn't have included that in his report to the board.
I think he would ask Bonnie for the information.
So I, I, I have to believe, no, that's okay, I just have to believe that, that those things were included in there, but I'm happy to go find that information.
And I'll continue to track it.
And, and see how we can jive up with the numbers that we're talking about here.
Is it possible, I guess, because I'm going to, to look at 2017, 18, 2018, 19, and then?
Comparison.
2019, 20, and have board attorney, in-house attorney, outsourced? And the total, just, just those. And I, and I know what's, what's gonna make it very difficult, I'm sure, is that in there, the shifting of, of staff. I mean, Mr. Martin left, and then for part of this last year, we had Mr. Dode, and the rest of the year, we had, you know, the firm, you know, Ashereta.
So. So maybe, I was gonna say, maybe if we go to this other piece, it's gonna help, because of where we are. So can we, can we do that?
It's hard to see.
I just wanted to.
It's on your, it's, if you.
Which one is it?
Which one is it?
No, I love, I.
No, it's the, our point. It's the third?
Yeah, so let me just point this out to you, just in case this information is, could be relevant to you and you, and you hadn't quite seen it yet. This is just some information that we, if you could shrink it down just a little bit, Dr. Pruitt, please. Some information from other counties that Mr. Williams was referring to a little bit earlier in terms of some of the staffing that is at some of our other counties. And we tried to public information request various ones of them that were larger than we are, and then, of course, our neighboring counties as well. And so this just gives you an idea of the setup that some of these have. They all, our, our setup of separate board attorney and staff attorney is, you know, a, a little unique, but there are several, several counties that have that split as well. And those that have that split, you can scroll down the screen a little bit, please, Dr. Pruitt. You'll see that many times, they have multiple, like in Pinellas, where you see they have the staff attorney, the board attorney, and various assistant and legal clerks that go along with them. So just kind of a, an overview of some of the items that other districts have. If you flip to the second attachment, Dr. Pruitt?
No.
This one?
Yes.
Pull that up some, come, and then come all the way down to the bottom, if you would, of the first page. Oh, wait, go, I'm sorry, go to the top first, so I can see. Pinellas.
No, it's Pinellas.
No, it's Pinellas. Okay, now just go down to the bottom of the very first page there, where you hit the first numbers.
So we're on the colored one now, and what are we looking at?
Pull that up a little bit.
Yes, I would, yeah, right there. I went, yes, I went to the second attachment, which is legal department analysis, I think it was called. Okay, and you see here, this is more of a graphical presentation that Brian was talking about, and Mr. Williams, I'm sorry, was talking about.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, did you find it?
Yes.
Okay, this is just more of a graphical presentation, as you were asking about, related to the different attorneys and how their roles and responsibilities would be split.
And this, this one is, is very clear with the roles. I think where we're questioning is the, the dollar.
Okay, so come on down to, come on down to the bottom. And then you see at the very bottom, where you have the salaries and benefits and the legal secretary expenses. So there's a column there for, you know, outsourced services, and then column for salaries and benefits of each board attorney, staff attorney, and then the two, you know, the two additional attorneys. So you'll see numbers there on the bottom for what each of those would, would determine.
Board attorney is the first column to the left?
That is correct. That is correct.
The two sixty-seven, fifty-two.
That is correct, which, which would include, um, salaries and benefits of the attorney. And we had, um, the secretary in there as well, because there's a secretary that's, you know, that would be in the department, so we included that. So this, I think, is more of the graphical presentation that you were asking about in terms of, so what would be the cost of each of the individuals, um, you know, or each of the individuals within the area as well as potential outsourced services.
Um, Mr. Quick, is the, is the two twenty-five for the six months? I, I don't remember and I don't know if you know. That was for the six months because that is what we decided to do, the six months. Was there a different number if we did the whole year?
It was, that was just cut in half for the whole year. It was four fifty. I mean, and then when you originally brought us on, it was done as an hourly rate. And we, we paid for as much or as little as you guys wanted us to do. And, you know, we came in, obviously, there were a lot of issues with the contracts and trying to make them consistent and streamline and get the liability per, uh, spelled out so that we protect the district. Um, so there's a lot of that built in. So it, it was, just depending on what model you guys elected to use. If you do hourly, you pay for as much or as little as you use us. And if you were to do the flat rate, you can use us as much as you want or as little as you want. It would just be for whatever that, that agreed upon flat rate. I don't think that's built into this, though. I think this is their projection based upon what they're proposing.
Yeah, correct, correct. That would be a projection based upon what we're proposing. So the, um, the contract for the flat rate as well, there were various things, remember, that came outside of that flat rate. So whatever services that would be asked for, that would be outside of that flat rate, would be hourly rate on top of those.
That's all the secretarial support.
As well as?
Secretarial support.
Yes, yes.
Ms. Fisher, I'm sorry, you had your hand up.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, and, and continuing, um, what I started to ask before. So it sounds like, um, the majority of the expenditure before was, was with the board attorney. And now it looks like we, what we're doing is totally reorganizing. And so we're gonna spend, um, almost a million dollars a year on legal services to include salaries, benefits, outsourcing and secretaries and assistants, right?
It would, it would, it would be, yes, would be, yes, it would be at about eight hundred thousand dollars, yes.
Okay, so then, I thought it said nine fifty as, as a total at the bottom.
Uh, yeah, with, with the, or you said with the secretary.
Okay, yeah, okay. So then, so we're changing what we're doing from the staff attorney's side to the staff attorney's side from the board attorney's side? Some of the?
So we're shifting?
Some of the responsibilities and we're shifting. And then we're gonna have more people in-house. And potentially, if I understood what Brian said right, having the in-house attorneys working directly with the different departments is potentially gonna be a preventive thing so that things can be settled, issues can be settled without necessarily going to litigation or, is that what you said?
That's correct. I mean, it's just, I, I, you know, I, I can't emphasize how much I think it would be important for staff to have an attorney present when, as much as possible in helping them reach decisions as opposed to kind of, um, you know. It, it cuts down also on the, um, you know, the, the requests. I think if the attorneys there are present, can sit in a meeting where issues are discussed and give that information almost instantaneous, um, it, it just, it, it's just a better process, I think. Again, and I came from a, a different model, that's how we had it in, in Dade County, where, uh, I was to a specific area, in my case, facilities and operations. And so I actually attended most of the meetings with the department. And I was there as we were making decisions and they asked legal questions as I was sitting there as opposed to having to make those decisions on their own or potentially have to email me or call me to get that information. It's just, um, you know, it, it also allows the attorney to specialize in, in that area and, and just, and focus. Right now, I'm, I'm kind of a generalist because I too, uh, a little bit of everything. So it just allows an attorney to really focus on that area and, um, and provide, um, as much resources to that department as possible.
So now we'll have, with, with your projected, um, chart, we'll have a board attorney, then we'll have a three inside attorneys, uh, access to act, outside counsel for specific areas and the coordinator of equity and diversity.
Correct.
That's our legal department. Okay, so, um, I, I guess, you know, my question would be, how much money are we actually saving potentially as opposed to what we spent before? It sounds like we have more people, we have more access in-house. And, and with, um, the negotiations that we did before with Roy Sirota and, and all of the, um, tasks that were listed that we listened to and agreed to, now this is a totally different approach. So I feel like, are we starting from scratch in having to decide what we as a board want to pursue? I mean, because this is a whole new, this is a whole new proposal. Am I misunderstanding that?
So, so I think that, you know, the, the comparison to be made because based on the, um, you know, the approved budget that we have right now, what we have in line, the two new attorneys that will be in the staff attorney are in the budget right now. So those, regardless of whatever decision the board makes, those will be there, right? So, so let's set those to the side because those are, you know, that's moving forward based on what's already been approved and the modeling, um, roles and responsibilities that kind of Brian had presented before, Mr. Williams had presented before, um, to be done. What really is the comparison here is what the potential cost would be between having, um, an in-house board attorney and having one that you outsourced for. So at this time, we have the, um, information related to each of those in terms of the current contract that we have, which is now currently budgeted in, um, our current budget at five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, um, with the potential to add an additional two hundred and twenty-five thousand on to that with, uh, the additional agreement with the six months that's getting ready to come forward.
Right.
Versus what the spend would be on an in-house attorney, um, which would be estimated to be between, uh, two hundred and two hundred and fifty thousand for, um, you know, a person that you have here on hand. So I, I believe, based on the conversation that we're having and the things that have already taken place and decisions that have already been made, that's really the comparison to be made. Is it?
Yeah, that's fair.
Uh, is that a fair statement?
Yeah, we saw the model, we approved the model. Two attorney, two additional attorneys were put in the budget as a result of that conversation.
Correct.
So?
Yeah.
Now we're talking about the one open, the one position that has only been filled for six months, which is the board, board attorney.
Correct, so really what we're talking here is that left-hand column, board attorney, what does that cost comparison look like between paying somebody in-house to do it and having, um, that contract in place to do it? Both models will, um, incur some out of, some outside consulting costs, right? Some outside legal costs. So I hesitated to take any of that off the board because until you kind of get somebody, whatever model you have up and running, it's hard to say, okay, well, this person's gonna walk in and tomorrow, all of these outside legal services costs are gonna be off the table. I don't think that's a true statement. So, uh, as far as the outside legals, uh, costs were concerned, we left them on the comparison, just as they have been, to not, um, you know, create a picture that may not necessarily be accurate. It may be accurate several years down the line as people kind of get up and running in their roles, but wouldn't be accurate right away. So I think really the valid comparison to be made is, what are the costs associated with those two things? Either the in-house attorney or your contract attorney, what value do you think you're gonna get out of those two, uh, out of those two models? And which one do you think as, as a whole, you would like to move forward with?
And can I just say, too, the, one of the issues, and we've heard this before, it's not like they're waiting out in the front lobby to be interviewed. That, that's gonna be a difficulty of finding someone that's capable, qualified and willing to do this position.
Hmm, so.
I think we've got some strategies and that was the third component of Dr. Pruitt was gonna address. Uh, you know, and I can already see some of the benefits of what we implemented in advertising the two positions for my office. It's really how you do it. So, um, you know, we, I know Dr. Pruitt's office utilized the Florida Bar. We also did locally with Lee County Bar Association. I sent it out to COSA, which is the, uh, National Association for General Counselors for School Boards. It also went out to, um, the School Board of Attorney's Association throughout the state of Florida. Um, it was also on LinkedIn. And there were some other external sources, um, that, uh, made sure the information went out. And, and I know it worked because Ryan, who came from Milwaukee Public School System, told that, told me he got a call from an attorney at Milwaukee that said they saw our advertisement for our position, so.
And he's the one that we got?
He, he, he's hired for the coordinator position in the Simonton office.
Have you ever been to Milwaukee?
But, but, but I know, but, yeah. So, so, I mean, I, I, I say that to, to, uh, to show that, you know,
National.
If you use the right strategies, you will find someone. And again, I've got three people tomorrow that have educational experience, um, working for different agencies, so.
I guess, I, well, I, I don't, not trying to muddy waters, I think in all fairness to Roy Sirota, one of the things when we're hiring these, hiring additional staff attorneys, the, the bill that, you know, what they would be charging for outside legal services would be adjusted accordingly based on, uh, a lesser amount of work moving in that direction, I would assume. So, I mean, that's just something that, you know.
And Mrs. Juvenel, and then Ms. Fish, oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm just asking, kind of asking, does that, does that make sense?
I just want to draw their attention to why I'm switching.
I think, Dr. Haxley, to the extent you're shifting, um, assignments or areas of practice from the board attorney to, uh, chief of legal counsel, then there would be less work for, um, for the board attorney to do. So if you're shifting things over, then yes, there would be, presumably, it would be, you know, the cost would, would go down if you're doing less work.
So that's what I was gonna say. So I think what you're trying to do is be more proactive than reactive. So the fact that we have the, you're shifting some of this work that's been on, um, Mr. Martin and then Mr. Dodek and, and we really have taken it and it's been back on the backs of Brian. So I think making the legal team.
Not really, they've done a lot of it.
Well, yes, but, but there, but we're taking a lot of it away, I, it looks like to me, and, and putting it over here where it probably should have been to begin with. That's my assumption. And I think in long term, the savings is there just because we, we're bringing it back in-house versus outsourcing of them delegating or Mr. Martin was delegating and out, and outsourcing. And that's, which I think is what you were saying.
Yeah, I was trying to, so, uh, if I can, um, you know, come back to what we have. Angela, if you could flip over to the fir- that first tab again, that, yep, this one right here. So this was the one that we were looking at before with the model of if we had, um, an, an in-house board attorney estimated cost related to that, um, for a total of about, um, total legal services, nine hundred and fifty thousand is what Ms. Fisher pointed out. Angela, if you flip to the next tab, this is really related to a board attorney, a firm model. So on that left-hand column, you see that's the number that changed there. I didn't change the outside counsel estimation of the hundred and five thousand because again, it might take some time for those things to roll out. But what you're looking at there on a conservative end for a full year, and that was just based on the contract for the six months that we just received of the five hundred thousand, um, you know, it's, it's, it, it could be and potentially is more than double the cost than having your person on hand. And that board attorney cost for the firm model still does not include any services that you might ask for outside of what was delineated within that flat fee. Again, would be some cost on top of, on top of even that. So I think that's a conservative amount of what your board attorney, um, firm model would look like for a full year um, based on the information that, you know, we, that we've received, the model that we've been working on and what we've received in terms of a new contract from Roy Sirota. So you see the, the, the differences, um, within the total cost there as you compare those two things.
Can I just ask one quick thing? I thought on that flow chart that you had, um, was there a paralegals on there or no?
There was, but that's not been factored in. That was just, that was totally speculative and, you know. Well, the thing is, obviously, as you, you know, it, it was, it was there. It was in part of the original vision. It also shows public records over there too, but that hasn't been.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't losing it.
And that, that has not been budgeted for this year and is not in the, in the model or the budget for this year.
Right, okay, thank you. Do we have this?
I don't, yeah, do we have that one?
Well, this was what was supposed to be uploaded, Amy said, but the second sheet was missing for what got uploaded, so.
So we can get that in our, in our weekly update, I guess?
Absolutely.
Just.
What, is there a timeline we're looking at here to say yea or nay or?
A timeline related to the hiring or the timeline related to a?
I see the, the timeline, basically, decision. I, I see the timeline regarding the hiring and it's gonna take us, what, you know, four to six months to do this. And we've heard that since the beginning. And we are, where does that take us with the firm we have now? It goes through till when?
Well, I think you're, you're now considering a new six months. So that's six, that is six months from now is what my understanding is.
So we would basically have to ante up for another six months. And he did say, Mr. Vermae did say, that if anytime within that six months, we, let's say in February, we found something that we did what we wanted, then they would not hold us to the fire for that.
That's right.
So our decision-making is kind of up to us as to the timeframe to get the decision made and get somebody in there. In the meantime, in tandem, Mr. Williams is hiring people to get that side of, of the work done. I honestly would like to see what we were asking for, that, that kind of layout of, you know, the last couple of years and this is what, and this is what.
Take on the historical numbers.
Yeah, maybe the last three years. And it's, I know it's hard because there's been movement with staff in that, but.
Well, the, well, the historical numbers are what they are. So it would have been, it's just gonna reflect the action that happened within that given year. So that's okay.
When did Mr. Martin leave?
We, seventeen? We have it, do you look on three fourteen? It was sent to us. Our, our.
He left right before I came, so it would've been in, maybe, man.
Twenty eighteen or something?
He left like July first.
July, it was like July.
He left like July first.
Or eighteen. So anything that we see annually is gonna have that mix of one and the other. But the overlap with Mr. Martin, Mr. Dodek should be the same in that it was one person. It was not.
Correct, there was still one person.
It was still one person doing it.
Yeah.
I would like to see, you know, that historical data. And I know it puts us another, what, two weeks or something, uh, to make this decision. I, I don't know whatever anyone else thinks about it.
Well, one thing you may want to consider because the six, I think the six months is key in that, um, some things, I think some things could work well in tandem. Like when you were, um, the hiring timeline that was in the information and the documentation that you received, I think was about six months, if I'm not mistaken.
Right, it was.
And so, um, it, it may, it, it may be something that you want to consider to say, okay, we'll begin that timeline or that process. Um, at the end of the day, you can still make whatever decision you want in terms of you found somebody you think that you are really excited about or you want to do. But either way, it doesn't put you six months more behind by, you know what I'm saying?
So we can do it in tandem.
Yeah, there's no harm in starting the process and seeing i- if there is a viable candidate that you all would be interested in.
Yes.
Um, as you make the decision and get to the, you know, closer to the end of the six months.
Mm-hmm.
Be on the value of your time.
That's okay.
Mm-hmm, because the, you know, and we could, um, you know, we could send you over, um, this fresh sheet with the historical figures. Kind of look at what you had before with, with Mr. Martin. Did you get it?
Yes, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen.
Okay.
We'll forward that to you. Wait, Mr. Vermae? I got you.
Yeah.
Ms. Fisher, you have a comment?
Compared to outside legal services, but you have, you know, you, you started your process and you had, because the historical things are what they are. We're looking at now what, what, what is at this point and what could potentially be.
And to save time to start this, looking, whatever.
Yes, we want to look at getting adequate legal services for this school district.
Right.
And, and making sure that we are cost-effectively doing that. and making sure that we are cost effectively doing that. So does this proposal coupled with what Dr. Pruitt showed us, the board firm option, we, so we haven't necessarily totally deleted that option at keeping the firm. With some renegotiation because there's a difference in anticipated responsibilities. So that probably still needs to be part of the conversation, I would think. Is that correct? All right.
So when do we, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So the candidates that you're interviewing right now, it's for the operational operations? On your side.
What's his side of the hall?
Academic student services is the position that's interviewing for tomorrow.
And you're still going to be interviewing for operations?
Operations and labor is the.
Okay, so we've gone on the staff side from one person, and I'm not trying to say that we didn't need more, to four people, four attorneys.
Well, one attorney is technically in a newly created office, which was.
Coordinator.
He just happens to be an attorney.
He's an attorney.
Correct.
But he's not being, he's not hired as an attorney, he's not being paid as an attorney. He just happens to be an attorney.
Could he?
It's the same with Lothemberg, he's an attorney, and he doesn't serve in that capacity.
Right. But I'm going to assume he knows enough that.
To be dangerous.
To be, I mean, you know, there are things where you need, you need an attorney, and there are other things where, you know, maybe somebody who's not hired as an attorney but is an attorney might be able to fill in. I'm just wondering if we're not going from not enough on the staff side to a little overkill.
I can tell you, having done all the work pretty much myself for almost a year, I don't think so. I, there's just things I just can't hit. And so, which isn't fair to staff. Honestly, it brings like the whole ethics thing into consideration because I have to tell you, and I express that to the superintendent, that I could not do everything. And it wasn't because of a lack of wanting or desire, but it just, you just can't multiply yourself and be in multiple places and do different things at the same time.
I understand that, but it's like a leap forward. And I just, I'm not super confident that we won't be engaging outside counsel. I hear what you're saying. I mean, that would be the difference that, you know, absolutely, but.
Yeah, I don't think the contention was that we would not engage outside counsel.
No, not, but to the extent that we do now.
Right, we would, the plan is to have a substantial reduction that would cover what we are paying for those two staff attorney positions is the intent.
Yeah, I think if I'm a board member, I'm looking for that we're going to retain additional attorneys, staff attorneys. But what we should see overall is a reduction in outside legal, or legal services, period. Because we're able to get the work done more efficiently in-house.
Okay, and that's exactly what, I'm hearing it. I'm not sure that I'm totally confident, but I guess once it goes in budget, it gets locked in that there's X number of dollars for outside. I'm just trying to look for, for myself individually, a confidence factor that if we, hiring two more staff attorneys or two more attorneys, that we will be reducing the outside counsel. I'm looking for the confidence factors, so what can you give us?
You can look at the expense that we've had. Let's just take ESC.
Okay.
And attending IEPs and all the things that go along with that. If you look at what we've spent on outside counsel just on ESC, which would only be a little component, well, a little bigger than bigger component of this, of the academic person, you already, that's already pays for it, so.
Yeah, now, as I said, I understand all that.
I'll give you an example that may help.
And I need to say, I need to be on a little time as well. And Ms. Patrica had her hand up.
I was brought into Miami Dade. I was in private practice actually here in the West Coast of Florida at a firm. I was brought in because of my area specialty to lower their outside counsel budget. They spent $3 million a year in outside counsel in my area. They now spend $200,000 a year. So they now have a net savings of $2.8 million a year in the area they brought me in. And you can see, the school attorney does a report, and it charts it out every fiscal year, and you can see it go from two, three million to 1.9 to 750, down to 200,000. When you have the ability to, and the time to actually focus on some of these cases, you, we're here, it's the same type of cases, day in, day out. You get to be an expert and you can reduce those costs.
I just wanted to hear it on tape.
So we're not talking about the general counsel, staff attorney, staff attorney. Those have been approved, we've said we're doing. We're talking about board attorney. So we're talking about $561,000 a year versus $260,000 a year. That's what we're talking about here. Whenever we decide to spend anything on anything, we take a risk that it's not going to work. Especially when you're telling us upfront that the work that you're going to do, Attorney Williams, along with your staff, is in the long run going to save us some money. I think we've already seen in your efforts with not settling some cases and taking them to trial, exercising your discretion with regard to the reputation of the district legal, I think we've already seen that save us a ton of money, or at least some money. And, you know, we decide to spend money on training for teachers. Do we know that that's going to be effective? We don't, we can't guarantee any of this. But I think that we're kind of getting off track here by looking at general counsel, staff attorney, staff attorney, when we really, this discussion is about the board attorney, right? And so I think what you're looking for from us is consensus to move forward with your timeline. And consensus to move forward with your timeline does not preclude us from continuing to have a discussion about the cost and weighing and measuring those risks.
That would be correct. That's my recommendation, is that you allow us to move forward with advertising and securing candidates for a school board attorney position. The one thing, and I, because I understand why the conversation overlaps, because you want to know what are the things that these new staff attorneys are going to be doing, right? That may not have been, and I think we'll know who the two candidates are. We'll have hired those people, so that'll be part of the consideration. We'll know the strengths of those two staff attorneys and what pieces that will have. I think we can do more of a financial analysis also at that time when we know that. And then I think, you know, we come to you and once we have, you know, some viable candidates, if that's the case, and have the conversation, and you all make a final decision on do you continue with the firm model? For me, from an HR perspective, the things that matter are, the two biggest things are fiscal responsibility and then are your needs being met as individual board members and as a collective board relative to what's happening? And I think those are the two things that you guys need to consider when you make that final decision.
And can I add to that? We've had several discussions about our policy updates and hiring Neola. And if we do not hire someone who has that expertise, and then we're still talking about one person doing those updates with a legal secretary. So we need to factor that amount in there. And Neola, the amount that was thrown out at one time was almost a million for them to do what it is that they do. That is something that we have to have done. So I don't know if that's been factored in, if that would be a plus or a minus, and where that would be added into it. Because even if you have one person that knows how to do that, they still can't do it single-handedly. And that is one thing that the firm has been doing.
It's on their list.
Yes.
Yeah, so policies and compliance is on the list of the board attorney.
Correct. Which can be, and I'm not going to talk for you. Can you confirm that your firm can do that, the policy?
They've already.
Yes, we certainly.
And that was part of the contract, right? I think we just need to move forward. I think we just have to say that we're going to give staff instruction to move forward or not. Let's just do it.
Do it.
Do it. All right.
I guess just from an attorney perspective, what you're putting out, is it going to be for an individual in-house? Or is it going to be for, are you seeking applicants for either an individual or a law firm? I'm just trying to think if it's something that we, we like working with you guys. We like to continue the relationship. And if it's going to be open to law firms, we would, I anticipate, would be submitting. Or if you're just looking for individuals, and then you're going to make a later determination of, do you want to stay with the law firm model with us or go in-house? I guess I'm just trying to make sure that you guys get the proper guidance so that when they put out the posting, you guys get what you're looking for.
Yeah, human resources wouldn't be involved in the firm. That would come from procurement. So I'm just looking at someone that would be a single board attorney that would be an employee of the school board.
And our decision then, as a board, will be whether we want to do that or to stick with the firm. And in the interim, we have a firm that we will contract out until we have someone so that we're not in a gap with nothing.
Correct.
And also, when you put up there the responsibilities, and since it is different from what we've seen before, perhaps that means a conversation with them to say, here is the list at this point, and here is the list now, and have that conversation between, you know, the three or four of you to see if that does make any type of, and including the policies and procedures pieces.
Fair enough. What you contracted with us to do, just one of the things I saw off the top of my head was real estate matters, if there's any. That's been proposed to be shifted over to outside counsel and to legal counsel, so that impacts.
That's what I mean, so kind of definitive. Okay, I think we'll beat this horse.
Can I just give a thumbs up that I'm going to move forward with?
May I raise that question?
With advertising for a school board attorney.
So you want to advertise for an individual school board attorney?
Yep.
That doesn't mean we hire.
No, no, no.
We're just looking at what we have to, okay, consensus?
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Fisher? And Ms. Fisher, what can we do to get you on board with?
I'm a dissenting vote. I mean, I think that that's kind of jumping the gun because we have negotiated with White Sirota. They have demonstrated that there are certain things they can do. So now there's a change in responsibilities, and we haven't had an opportunity to speak with them to find out how much would it be for them to continue with us with fewer responsibilities, still helping us with policies and compliance?
And I totally agree with you, and I think that's where we're at. And what we're seeing though, to put all of the cards on the table in making that decision whether we're going to go individual or stick with them, other board members are just saying let's.
So we're just seeing what our options are.
Right.
And if there is even an option, I think that we have no idea right now.
Exactly.
And that's what you're trying to determine.
Right.
And I think once we see that, we'll know what we're going to do.
If you decide that it's not fiscally responsible, let's say, then from the point you made that decision, we're talking it's another six months.
Right, it's just the timing.
And to know whether there's any viable candidates or not.
Right.
And too, I think that gives John an opportunity to take it back and to have that come back for us.
Yeah. And I'll get a.
We have attorneys still sitting.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so there's no.
Yeah, because I haven't seen some of the documents. I only saw the same ones you guys saw. So if I can get a list of what the responsibilities are, then we can figure out what the cost would be and what a proposal from us would be.
So basically, what we're doing is waiting until we get back the next layout of information, okay?
You have two viable options to consider.
And we need all of the information to do that.
It's not, it's not, it's not waking them up at all.
No, we're not voting to get rid of our attorney.
They would not say that at all. It's John.
No, because I'm actually.
I was just out of my bags, I was.
No, 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 no.
All right, in the interest of moving forward, I can.
Thank you.
I'm with you there, okay. Thank you very much, and thank you for, any other, you have another comment?
Just can we take five minutes?
Yeah, I will. Well, we have to stop anyway. Thank you, we are now closing the workshop. And in five minutes, we will return for a briefing.